Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a roll call, please. Kim is not here tonight.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O’Connell.
Here.
Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here. All right, welcome all to the July 2022 hearing or meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. I am kind of lonely, I feel like, given the few people in the audience. It must be the heat and not the light agenda that this time that’s caused that. So for those of you who have come out, thank you very much for doing so. We have a pretty light agenda this evening and expect to be out shortly, but important topics nonetheless. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the May meeting, please?
I’ll make that motion.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any edits, deletions, corrections? Sorry? What was that?
He said, “Should it be June?” And I said, “No, it’s May.”
Oh, were they?
It is May.
It is May, yeah, okay. She’s very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries. Great. Okay, Cheryl, will you just take us through this request for the six-month extension, please?
Dear Mr. Zuckerman and members of the Planning Board, on behalf of J7 Architecture and Design P L L C, we request a six-month extension of the site plan approval. We are working with the Putnam County Department of Health on the public water supply, which is nearing completion. We have received approval of plans for DOT and all other conditions of the resolution have been addressed. However, we do not believe all items will be completed in time to allow sufficient time to have the site plan signed.
Glenn, do you want to add anything about this? No? Okay, your name’s on the bottom of this piece of paper. Okay. All right. Anything, Steve, on this?
Yeah, we get these every once in a while. Code 17568A requires the site plan be submitted within six months for signature and filing. Code 17568E says that they’re entitled to a six, one, six-month extension, and after that, they can come back and get extensions upon showing of hardship. So this is their first, as of right, extension, and the board pretty much has to grant it.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve a six-month extension, please?
I’ll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? None? Hearing, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Reminder, Cheryl, so I think I took an informal straw poll with the board. I’d like to talk about August, and I move that. Over the last, I think, five or six years, we’ve met maybe every other time in August. It’s been a little inconsistent, to tell you the truth. But I think historically, most boards of trustees and directors in most municipalities do take the month of August off. We have not done it in some times in the years past when we’ve had incredibly busy schedules. I will tell you that maybe the deluge has ended in development. That may be tied to COVID abating, and it may be tied to interest rates rising, but our cup is not running over these days. So I’d like to entertain having a recess or not having an August meeting. That’ll increase your per-hour pay by not having to come, and I think it’s not a burden on the public. Any opinions on that notion? Anyone would like an August meeting? Okay, all in favor of not having an August meeting? Can I have a motion for that?
I’ll make a motion.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we are not going to have an August meeting then. I’m not sure I needed a vote, but what the heck. All right, so we’re not going to have an August meeting, and that’s fine. Thank you very much. Okay, Kingsley Tree, I see our good friend. Jason is here with his mix of business and pleasure in his attire.
All right, so Jason Snyder with Beadie and Watson, representing the applicant Kingsley. So since the last meeting, we have done some additional work on-site to address some of the concerns that Ron Gaynor and the board has had regarding our development. We have done some additional, well, we did some additional testing to the north of the property, septic testing, which has allowed us to, in turn, move the septic and in turn move the structure closer to the north, which allowed us to push it back a little bit more off the road and also square it up to the road as opposed to having it kind of askew with the wetland buffer. We’ve also eliminated the, kind of, the long drive that ran parallel back down towards, along the road, which allowed us to eliminate some of that tree clearing along the roadway, which will allow us to keep some more of the existing vegetation. I can tell you, I didn’t want to present new material with this meeting, but I did revise this plan, even the last one that you got with the tree plan, to eliminate some of the parking in the front. So I pushed the parking area back another 10 feet, which will allow us to keep even more vegetation along that strip between the parking area and the road. I believe one of Ron’s comments in his latest memo had mentioned providing some screening, some additional screening there. I believe at the last, at our site meeting, we were talking about pushing everything back so that we didn’t have to clear vegetation in order to plant vegetation. So I wanted to keep the same goals there. So I think with the latest plan, which you don’t have, I can bring it up if you’d like. But so we have even a larger buffer strip. So right along here, I believe that this is enough existing vegetation, and it’s thick enough in here where we don’t need to provide any additional screening. At least, that’s the intention. We got a pretty good strip between the septic, the proposed septic area, and the road here. We have our minimum 20 feet between the side yard and the septic, and the clearing required for the septic area here. There’s quite a bit of vegetation here for buffering. Like I said, we did do some additional soil testing here for the septic system. We got exactly the same results as we did. The previous septic area was more in here, whereas the building was like in here. I did rework some of the parking and included some of the parking, counted some of the parking that’s for employee parking inside of the garage with this new plan. I sized the stormwater infiltration system with the new plan. So I guess what I’m saying is the next plan will be a lot more complete. I have added a chart with the parking count, sewage flows, comparison between, a little comparison and an outline of the wastewater flows and water usage, which should be on the plan that you have. We did do a tree plan, which you have with the submission. Let’s see, other than that, I mean, I think that addressed a lot of the, you’ll make that determination, but I think we’ve done a lot to address some of the concerns from the site meeting that we had, as well as some of Ron’s memos. The information, I believe, is more complete, so.
Board member questions? Anyone? Yes, Laura, please.
So Ron does mention, because I actually missed the site walkthrough. Like, what is the, what’s the work that’s going to be going on there? Just so that, because there’s a mention from Ron about understanding the maximum amount of people that’s going to be working there, along with the amount of cars and vehicles that are going to be there, just on a day-to-day basis?
Right, so basically, what we have is a mixed-use building. On the ground floor, the garage is a four-bay garage, where Ian and Forrest have kind of similar kind of tree businesses. Ian is like more tree and property maintenance, and Forrest is more in the planting and horticulture business. So the employee, so basically, I can just tell you, Ian, it’s his business, Kingsley Tree Care, it’s him and two employees. And he has, for the next submission, I’ll give you all the equipment and vehicles that they have. But he basically has a van, a chipper, and a pickup truck. And Forrest, it’s also him and two employees. And he has similar, you know, they basically have a van and a pickup truck that they do their business out of. And they, so it’s a total of six employees using this facility. And they also intend to, on the second floor, is a two-bedroom. There’s two two-bedroom apartments, which they intend to inhabit themselves for the time being. So there’s, so that’s four bedrooms. So the parking count for that is, so we provided six spaces for the employees and three spaces for the apartments. It’s one and a half spaces per dwelling unit.
And we don’t necessarily see any sort of large vehicles, like trucks or trailers, coming in and out of that space.
Nothing like that, no. But we’ll give a brief traffic kind of analysis. I mean, I wasn’t planning on doing anything too. I was just going to outline, there’s going to be, you know, three cars leaving at this time, and three cars, you know, the times that they go in and out. It’s kind of, it’s a little bit off-peak, their hours. It’s going to be early in the morning, and it’s going to be before the morning rush hour and before the morning, because that’s just the hours that they work. So, but I’ll outline all that in a letter with the next submission.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Jason, so did you say one of the trucks is a chipper?
I believe they have, yeah. I believe Ian has a chipper.
And will that be chipping?
No, there’s going to be no tree processing.
Because I just know from my own street that that’s very, very noisy, and considering that’s a very, I’m just wondering about the chipping.
No. There’s going to be absolutely no processing of trees or using of any of the equipment on this property.
Are there, Jason, I know these are preliminary plans, but the elevations, you know, when we did the site walk, one of the things we talked about was how the neighbors across the street are now looking at something very different with that intersection right there, when they come to that intersection. And I noticed that the drawings, your roof line, you sort of have a, you know, salt box configuration. And what that does is it makes the front of the building, I think, a little more imposing than it has to be. And, right, so if you look at that elevation straight on, is there, I mean, is there a reason why you go with that and write, well, can you, or something? Put a doghouse dormer on it or?
It does have a, well, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It’s just like a big forehead across the front of it, you know?
Yeah.
And having one myself, you know, I can say that. But I just, you know, after we had spoken about sort of trying to keep that profile down a little bit, because they are looking at a commercial building that they haven’t looked at before.
I mean, like you say, it is preliminary. I don’t see any reason why they, why you couldn’t soften this front up a little bit. I’ll inform them of your.
Maybe there’s a reason, I don’t know, but it just looked a little, you know, especially, plus all your pitch is now facing back towards the wetlands, so.
I will, yeah, I mean, I’ll inform them of, see what the reasoning behind that is and if they can make the change, I’ll have them make the change.
Anyone else? No? I have two questions. So go back to your very colorful shades of green graphic. Just remind me, what’s dark green and what’s light green? I’m making guesses, but what do you think, what is it?
I should have put a light green.
I know, that would have helped.
The dark green here is.
The darkest green, right.
The dark green, that’s the buffer.
Right, so what are the, I’m talking about the two shades of green next to the road.
Okay, so I got, so I got, so basically, the darker green is the area that’s going to stay vegetated.
Yeah.
The lighter green is the portion that’s going to stay, it’s either like mowed now. That’s why I have this, because they kind of mow around here. This guy mows like around in here. This is all going to be mowed. And then I also have another little shading here, which we’re going to clear and let go back to, so there’s little strips here that we’re not going to continue to maintain. We’ll just let it, like in the back here, that’ll just go back to, once it’s cleared and we do the grading, it’ll just go back to being a jungle, hopefully, like it is now. So that’s, so there’s some portions in here that we’re just going to let go back to what, so there’s, so that’s what, so the lighter green basically is mowed.
So I guess, thank you. So my question then is, it does seem like it’s not, my eyeballing it, it seems like there’s a fair amount of mowed area making the building visible to the road. That’s the part that I’ll just come and stand by it. Sorry for being so overdressed today. I’m talking about this portion here and this portion here. I know you’re trying to create some visibility.
Yeah, that’s.
But I’m also mindful of the chapter in our code that talks about minimizing the view of anything that’s not a service business. Since this is not a service business in the sense that it’s, or sorry, a retail business. So since it’s not a retail business, I just want to make sure my concern is for the neighbors across the street, because for the history of this region, that has not been a built lot.
Yeah, I mean, I just have that in the required sightline triangles for sight distance. So that can be, so the maintenance in here of the grass, I believe, is 30 inches. For the sightlines, I believe it’s 30 to 90s, two inches for clearing of the, for sight distance. So that’s for sight distance, basically.
Okay, well, is there any way we can push the building back a little further? I see you’ve got a little room with the wetlands buffer.
So in positioning this building, I basically pushed, we got 20 feet, 10 feet, the septic area, which I wanted to, it was a balance between spreading it out this way and going this way. I got the minimum here required for grading and whatnot between the septic and the building. I wanted to maintain a little buffer here, a buffer for the buffer. So really, this corner and this, in this direction here, kind of dictates the, how far it goes back. So I basically just slid it back in this direction as much as I could.
Peter, go ahead.
So behind the line of sight that you’ve, obviously, we need there, there seems to be a pretty good buffer of green that’s going to be, hopefully, a visual deterrent from the roadside.
It’s about 20 to 30 feet. And there are some, you know, there are some larger trees in there, which I was able to hopefully mow, hopefully be able to maintain with this newer layout.
Anything else? No? All right, so I’d like to then tackle the notion of scheduling our public hearing. So can I get a motion to schedule a public hearing for the September board meeting?
I’ll make that motion.
Okay, second? Any discussion on that? Everyone feel ready for that? Yeah, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions? Okay, so Cheryl, you’ll do the help with the noticing and all that good stuff. It’s a major project, so I guess it requires a certain level of signage in the public. Anything else? Steve, anything?
No.
The public hearing was the main issue for this evening. I think that’s been addressed. I looked at the EAF Part II. I think you were maybe even a little bit too honest in terms of marking that some things are potential impacts, but the board will have to go through that at some point in order to make its secret determination.
I believe Ron completed the first.
Well, Ron was a little too honest, then, perhaps, but that’s whoever it was.
Okay, I’ll take a more thorough look at it.
Well, the board will be reviewing it, and, you know, I’m sure Ron will have something to say about that.
Jason, speaking for myself, being, there’s no such thing as being too honest, okay, so.
Well, what I meant was there are some things that he marked off as having potential significant impacts that I think, when the board looks a little bit more closely, you’re going to see that there is no potential for significant environmental impact. But we’ll defer that until you actually get into it.
Thank you very much. Okay, Hudson Highland Reserve is next. We spent the last, I think, two meetings, I can’t remember, one or two, editing the finding statement. And I know that Aaron submitted the last one, I think it was pretty minor changes, but I just want to leave it open for anyone who has any more comments or questions. Aaron, is there anything you want to mention about the last rev revision you did?
Sure. So I sent it around shortly after the last meeting, around 17th of June, mostly editorial in nature, based on, you know, rewatching the video and getting everybody’s feedback. There’s one that I want to make sure everyone’s okay with, which is on page four. There was a lot of talk about enforcement with the HOA and questions about what’s the mechanism. So I, upfront in the project description, where the HOA and bylaws are first mentioned, I added a couple of sentences to the bottom of that paragraph. I can read it out loud unless you want to follow along. Yeah, so this was suggested, I think you had suggested the language. Steve was okay with it at the meeting, and I just took it and wrote it out. So it says, “During site plan subdivision review, the Planning Board will review the HOA’s rules and mechanisms for enforcement to ensure that the mitigation measures proposed through the HOA and described throughout this finding statement are made conditions of any approval and ultimately implemented.”
Steve, you want to just remind everyone when, because we’re not voting on this. We’ve already voted on this, so this is just a second editorial meeting. But what are our next steps for Hudson Highland Reserve?
Hudson Highland Reserve has completed, oh, let me take a step back. You’re right, the board voted to accept the finding statement, completing secret review. In voting to complete, to accept the finding statement, there were some comments made for just semantical changes to the language, just a few minor things. This evening, we just want to make sure that everyone’s satisfied that those have all been captured and fairly represented in this document. You don’t need another vote on it. You’ve already voted on the finding statement. We just want to make sure that this is, in fact, got everything in it that we talked about at the last meeting. So assuming that that stands, and there’s no motions to change it or anything along those lines, the next step will be for them to go to the town board to seek the zoning change that they need in regard to the one additional lot, which they would derive from obtaining the zoning change. Assuming that they get the zoning, well, whether they get the zoning change or not, they will be coming back to this board after that for completion of the conservation subdivision. And you’ll go through the process of actually approving or approving the conditions or disapproving, as the case may be, the conservation subdivision. So this is the last thing you’re going to do until they come back from the town board.
Do you have something on the finding statement, Glenn?
No, what I’d like to speak to.
Let’s do that after I just get the matter done and the finding statements. Any more edits on the finding statement? Does anyone have it, anything? Going once, twice, okay. So Aaron, oh, you want to say?
Yes, if this is official now, the PDF version that’s on the website already can probably stay there. It just probably needs a date to capture when it was officially final. And then it gets circulated to the involved interested agencies, the same ones that got the FEIS. So I’ll coordinate with Cheryl to make sure that it goes out to them.
Great, thank you, Aaron. All right, Glenn, to you.
Mr. Gobba talked about the change, the law, the change in the zoning and subsequent to that, there’s, the failure of that particular thing would result in the loss of a lot and nothing more. So, and we’ve been through several years of back and forth, some on our part, some on your part, and we’ve come to the end of the secret process. The plans have been developed, redeveloped, issued, reissued, massaged, reviewed, far longer than you did before. So I think it’s appropriate to ask you to schedule a public hearing on the subdivision for September, the preliminary subdivision public hearing.
So Steve, why don’t you give us some input on that? Because I’m not sure, I understand why Glenn is asking for it. You just give us some guidance on that.
Well, in scheduling a public hearing, the main consideration is that the plans are complete and the public will be fully advised of what’s being proposed for development. And I would agree with Glenn that certainly the plans are at a point now where anybody who looked at them would be able to tell what’s being proposed here. The issue with the zoning change is whether there’ll be one more lot or one less lot. Having said that, I don’t think this board has ever scheduled a public hearing for a plan which is not currently in approvable state. That is to say, they can’t get the additional lot unless the zoning change is granted. So you’d be stepping a little bit further out in granting this request than you have for any prior, at least as long as I’ve been on the board, applicant. If it’s not an approvable form, you generally do not hold a public hearing on it. But again, this is a little bit of an odd duck. It’s been before you for many years, and, you know, people in the public would have to appreciate, you’d probably want an announcement to that effect. Look, it’s either going to be Plan A with 24 lots, or Plan B with 25.
It’s 24 if the zoning change is granted.
So it’s 24 or 23.
It’s 24 if the zoning change is granted, and it was 25, we went down to 24 to agree with Ron, or it’s 22. We’ll lose two lots.
Okay.
We’ll lose two lots.
Here’s the thing.
But do you know which lots you would lose?
Hold on, I don’t know if that matters, right, for this decision.
Well, it does in the sense that if the public were to look at it and say, all right, if the zoning change is granted, lot number 17 over there is going to be part of this. If zoning change isn’t granted, lot 17 is not going to be up there. If zoning change isn't granted, lot 17 is not going to be up there and, well, I don't know how lots would be reconfigured, I guess.
With all due respect, there's plenty of times that the plan changes between preliminary and final. And you have the option to have a public hearing at final. And the very specific reason is that, for, for doing that is if there are changes during the course of getting the approval of the Health Department and getting approval of the other agencies. So I think you reserve the, you could have the public hearing now because it's essentially there. It's, it, I, you're right, there would, there could be two less lots. But on the other hand, there could be another, a less lot because of the Health Department or because of some other reason. And at that point, when we come back for final approval with the things we know we can get through, then you can exercise that option to have the public hearing or waive it as was, as your normal case, if there are no changes.
Let me ask Steve one question and I'll turn over to the board for their opinions. Steve, will the, will the town board, when it has this conversa, this, um, assessment of whether to approve this, will they be having a public hearing as well?
Yes, if, if they decide to entertain it, the town board has no obligation to entertain, uh, applications for zoning changes. It's a legislative act. Once they get the application in, the board will make a determination as to whether they're willing to process, uh, the proposed zoning change. It requires enactment of a local law or not. If they decide that they are, then there will be a public hearing on that local law for the zoning change.
Well, I, I'll just state my opinion at this point, which is if the town board is going to have a public hearing, and chances are they would have a public hearing on this, I think there's a decent chance of confusion to the public that two boards will be having simultaneous or near simultaneous, uh, public hearings on the same application for different purposes. That is a confusing state and I am all about transparency and clarity. That's, I'll let, I'll turn over my fellow board members to ask questions and share their thoughts and we can, we can entertain Glenn's request. So thoughts?
My position is, I mean, I'm in agreement. I also don't feel like we should, I mean, we could be setting up a precedent here as well. Oops. Chair, if I may?
Oh, she's speaking, please.
Sorry. And also because to that point, you know, isn't part of what we would be opening ourselves for a public hearing is based upon the ruling or the position of the town board. So I don't know what, how we would set a date for a public hearing not knowing what the ruling would be.
Others? Heidi, please.
Also, I would just note for the record that there was no delay on the planning board side. The, the long, the, the long time period that went by, as far as I know, was because the applicant was silent for a long time. If, if, I, I, I wasn't on the planning board during the time period when this project first came up. But I feel like we've act, acted very expeditiously once the application came back before the planning board. So that is, that's not the, the planning boards act, acted quickly.
Okay, others? But, but, do you have something, Jermaine, to this?
I was just going to say, you know.
I don't know who you are.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm Drew Gamwells from Keenan Bean.
Okay.
I'm Rico Works counterpart. I was just going to say that the planning board does have the option to set the public hearing and then adjourn it if, if it comes time to September and the town board, you know, is going to set their public hearing on the local law. If the town board's not going to entertain it at all, then we'll, we could know ahead of time and we could have the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, continuing, board members, Glenn, Dennis, you have anything?
Uh, not at this time, sorry.
Okay, Neil?
I feel like I've, I've, I've asked other applicants recently to, to deliver complete applications and complete drawings. And, um, so I would, I think I would be, it would be inconsistent to, to grant.
Let's just let me finish, let, let, let board members finish and then if you want to do a thrust and parade weekend.
Yeah, I, I think it would be confusing, uh, to have them too close together and also what Neil said, incomplete.
Okay, so I, without, Dennis accepted, I think every board member shared their perspective. So Glenn, go ahead, feel free to say something if you'd like.
There's a couple of things going on here. Generally speaking, you don't go through a whole secret process until the very end, when you, the night you're giving final approval, your closed secret. That's when it happens. We went through that whole process. You're right, the applicant did go to sleep for a while. And, and probably the majority of the time, the, the applicant, it was on our side at the time, if you're going to balance the timeout. But it still has been a long time and there have been many, many changes to this. And the plans fully demonstrate all of the concerns that the public, that the public voiced during the meeting. And it's, would be expeditious for the client, for, and for the, for the property owner to move this along. And you'd still have the option to open a public hearing for your final approval and it gets the applicant one state, one, one step further in the process.
I think you, you and your colleague have advocated your client and I think they will be appreciative. Is there any motion to schedule a public hearing? Okay, hearing, no motion, we're going to move on then. So thank, appreciate you raising it. Okay, uh, so you're good, Aaron, on the document, we're good. We'll, we'll, we'll wait the, the town board's, uh, actions to move forward. Okay, last item of business is the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. I will make a, uh, I guess I'd call it gratuitous remark to begin, which is, I am going on August 6th to see the Mr. Burns play at Shakespeare. For those of you who are deeply attentive to the board's personal predilections towards that organization, yes, I'm going to see a play at Shakespeare, as I've done most summers for almost 30 years. So it's out there in the open, okay? And if anyone else would like to state that their, uh, their, uh, social plans this summer, please feel free to let them know. I'm, I, I speak into the microphone to a certain person who is apparently very attentive to those of us in our, our social activities. So that's that.
So there won't be any gotcha pictures or?
Well, there may be a gotcha picture, but I, I will be there and you're all now aware of said.
I can say, I saw it a couple of weeks ago, it was terrific.
Oh, good, good. I thought it sounded fun. Okay, uh, the purpose tonight is to discuss the positive declaration that this board reached. Let me ask something, Steve, when it's 6-0-1 with one abstention, is that unanimous or not?
Well, it's not unanimous, there's one abstention. It's unanimous with one abstention.
Unanimous with one abstention, okay. So that, that was the vote on the pause deck. Aaron has distributed a, uh, a determination document, that's this document here. There'll be one, uh, minor edit at the tail end related to, um, scoping. But what I, before we get to that, which is an administrative topic, the purpose of our next period of time in the, this board meeting is to gather any edits. We did that in the last couple of weeks with, the last couple of months with, with the Hudson Highlands Reserve. We'll go through the similar process. I'll go by person and please suggest our edits. Unless there's a violent disagreement with the board members' suggestions that we need to actually take a vote on it, I expect we'll just take comments. And again, we'll just talk them through as we've done before. So, uh, the document is here, it is not very long. I personally think it's fairly cogent, clear and specific enough to, I think, convey the, the conversations we've had. But I'll open up to my fellow board members to see if they have any edits. Heidi, please.
The only edit, I was just wondering if, um, Peter Lewis's comment about, that is currently in visual resources and community character, which seems to, uh, also apply to recreational purposes?
Page three.
Yeah.
Visual resources.
Well, so in the write-up, yeah, it's, um, it says, uh, so in the AKRF write-up, it says, there is currently not a clear understanding with the applicant about where and how.
Oh, I think we're mixing the wrong documents, oh. I think we had.
You have the wrong one?
Yeah, we're, we're in the pa, this is, everyone, we're in the pause deck. This is not, not Aaron's memo to us, this is the pause deck that would be a.
Yes, but it, 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 what it has to do with is what the scoping will include.
The memo was to capture the board's feedback at the last meeting and that informed.
Is it already in recreational?
Recreational, there was no comments on.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to comment on, not very articulately, I guess.
So you, you're saying you want to add to the positive declaration a point about recreation?
Correct, because I, I feel like Peter Lewis's comment, he's more direct, and Peter can obviously correct me. But the question about what the access of the public will be that currently have access to the site and to walk around it, will that, that seems to me to belong under recreational.
Hey, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to be clear about this if we could.
Please.
The positive declaration was adopted at last month's meeting. This board voted on it.
Correct.
All right? It, it, it did so based upon oral comments on the pause deck. Everybody spoke. This document that you voted on is capturing all those comments. If you're trying to say that there was a comment made on the pause deck that was voted on that isn't in this document, that's fine. But unless you want to move to amend the pause deck, which is a whole different, different animal, all we're doing right now is looking and making sure that all the comments are captured and set forth in this. So I, it sounds to me like you're trying to bring something else in that, am I mistaken about that? That, that, that wasn't mentioned at last month's meeting?
I mean, I, I, I have not memorized last month's meeting, but I would just say it struck me that the, the comment about visual resources and community character that Peter made belongs under recreational resources. I, I'm worried about the scoping. But if, if it's going to open a big can of worms, it's, it's probably not important because it will be addressed. But I'm just, I, I'm not sure it's under the.
I have a, I have a possible solution. So when I read that and listened to that comment, to me, it sounded like a more of like a project description operational kind of comment, right? Like what's, what's the public access going to look like? Currently, the site's not a public park. It's private. It's going to continue to be private. So if that's a question Peter had, the applicant can surely write up pretty, pretty clearly in their project description how it's going to operate and how access will be allowed for the public. I think that's more of a, just an operational project description kind of point, more than an environmental impact point.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me be precise. The, the, the write-up that Aaron has done that is our positive declaration is a recitation of the items that are significant adverse impacts. When I, and Peter, you please speak up, when I read your comment about recreational purposes, it was more about a question as to what will those be, not that it's a significant adverse impact.
It wasn't an environmental question, it was really about, uh, access. And, uh, I think the town, uh, the members of the town are, are probably very concerned about whether or not they're going to be able to have access, where they're going to have access, when they're going to have access. But like Steve said, um, and everybody else here, uh, it's not an environmental question.
Well, environmental is pretty broadly drawn in secret, but I, I, I take the point. I take the point and I'm not trying to raise a ruckus. Just trying to make sure that the scoping document reflects the discussion.
We will have, without question, starting in September, a discussion of the scoping. And if there are topics that we would like to have greater edification on to include access, I'm sure that is not a problem to, to clarify what the access will be.
We already planned and discussed.
I, I figured as much, okay. Others, Heidi?
No, no, that's it, sorry.
No, no, it's fine, thank you for raising. Laura? Good, Dennis?
I'm, I'm good with the draft.
Good, Neil?
No, we're good.
Good, Peter?
This front, yes, good.
Okay, all right, wow, all right, that turns to me. Um, I had, um, God, if I could read my handwriting. So one, one question related to the utilities, Aaron. In the paragraph, "Utilities, water, sewer and energy" on page, uh, three, this is the, I guess, one, two, the third, third major section, so utilities, water, sewer and energy. You state accurately the conversation. The one point you don't raise, and again, I don't feel it strongly, but, because I think what's here is sufficient, but the, I think one of the things I raised that moved me in the conversation was that, there was a, I don't remember if the well went dry, but there was, there was a change in water during a previous era when there were, when there were wells dug. I think, I'm, I may be misrecalling the history of it, but I believe there was a, there was a period where those neighbors in the region had experienced a water problem that had to be investigated. And I, either the, either Shakespeare's previous owners paid for it, am I not recalling that correctly?
No, you're right, you're right.
So I, that, that, whatever that incident was, and again, it was, it was well outlaid in the water study. I, I, a sentence related to the histor, this was a historic pattern that occurred, or maybe not a pattern, but it happened previously, I think is a worthy note in that paragraph on utilities. It's not as if I'm just worrying about it for worry's sake.
Yeah, um, so the sentence where it says, uh, "The demand for potable water has the potential to result in impacts to off-site private wells which have experienced drawdown from historic operations at the site."
All right, well, there you go. I think that's.
Is that enough?
That's, uh, draw, maybe drawdown is the term I wasn't familiar with. But if that, if that means a reduction, again, I don't remember if the, I don't remember the history lesson, whether it was actually they went dry or there was a reduction in flow, I don't remember the details. But if drawdown's sufficient, then I, then I'm fine. Is that what that term means, a reduction? Okay. And the only other one I had was that on the next page, traffic, transportation, parking, top paragraph, can you just confirm with me, I have not gone back to our documentation from Mr. Canning's study. The final sentence says, "The, the number of persons projected to be on site any one time could be as high as 853." Can you just remind me, you got 853, which time period, which usage, I just don't remember that stat.
That was based on the most recent EAF that reflects the loss of the indoor theater. And the hotel.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the new number. That's in Mr. Canning's most recent memo slash amended traffic study that was part of the EAF part three.
All right, then those are my last pieces. So, at that point, let me then ask you, Aaron. So if everyone would turn to the, um, same page, I guess the fourth page of the pause deck, at the bottom it says, "Scoping of DEIS." Everyone see that? Bottom of the page, fourth page. Next time, Aaron, do page numbers so everyone has a page number. Uh, next time we do a, next time we do a positive declaration. At the bottom, so Aaron has made a change in this because we can apparently have a blank on a date. So Aaron, could you just restate what you're changing, this section underneath scoping the DIS two, please?
So some lead agencies have the pause deck and the draft scope ready to go at the same time. In this case, we don't. Right now, we're, we're accepting the pause deck and we're going to release that. And then the applicant will be directed to write the draft scoping document between now and the next meeting, I assume. And that'll be submitted. So this, all this language here about scheduling the scoping meetings premature. So what I propose to replace that with is the following, and I'll just read it. "The lead agency has directed the applicant to prepare a draft scoping document pursuant to section 617.8 of SECR. The draft scoping document will be circulated to the same involved interested agencies that receive the positive declaration. An information on a public scoping session and scoping comment period will be shared with all involved interested agencies and the public at a later date."
Steve, is that sufficient?
That is sufficient.
Okay, is everyone okay with that? Okay, great. All right, so I, we don't, we're not taking another vote, so we're just, I think we're done with that action. And Steve, would you just remind the board and frankly, the public, what comes next?
Well, what ordinarily comes next is that the applicant submits a draft scope and then there's a public scoping session on it to, to finalize the scope. In this particular case, um, you've directed the consultants to prepare a punch list or a list of items that the board feels should be in the scope. That will be compared against the draft scope that is submitted by the applicant. We'll circulate to them as soon as we can, just to give them a kind of heads up as to what the board is interested in. And then, um, after the scope is settled upon, they'll begin drafting the, um, the draft environmental impact, impact statement.
Okay, is that clear to everyone what he means by a punch list? Basically, the topics we want to go understand more, which should be fairly.
It's not binding, by the way, it's just precatory, hey, this is what we're thinking of, you know? It isn't like this is the final, they may have more things in the draft scope.
More, more is better than less in this case. So that's the plan. So maybe I just ask the applicant's representative just to share how you feel about, is that okay? That work for you guys in September?
That's exactly what we had envisioned, uh, working off the AKRF memo and, uh, and the resolution itself. We've already begun to work at, uh, at a scoping outline. So we'll be prepared to have that to you with any changes in the plans that the development team and the client come up with by the September meeting.
Great, okay. And when you say it's a public scoping, can you just, that, you just mean it's done in the public venue, not that there's?
No, it's, it's kind of like a public hearing, the public is allowed to comment on it, but it's not a public hearing. It's called a scoping session.
Okay, so maybe we can, you give some clarity to us, the public, and maybe for Cheryl's sakes, if we have noticed it, I'd like to make clear to the public if they're allowed to get to the microphone and say, I'd like investigation of X, Y and Z. We, we are transparent to the public, so they know, because there obviously was a weight of public comments on all sides. And I think it's valuable for us to make sure that's clear.
But to be clear on that, this is not a public hearing on the application. The comments should be directed to the scope and what should be considered. It isn't, we think this is good, we think that's bad, this is. this is good, we think that's bad, this is, we want you to look at this, we want you to.
Understood.
The scoping session will not be at the September meeting, because we will only be giving you the scope at that time.
Wait, so one more time, sorry. You, you were both talking at the same time, so.
No, you go, Steve. The scope won't be ready at that time, the board has to look at.
Oh, so once the board agrees on the scope, then we.
Well, once you acknowledge receipt of it, then you hold your scoping session.
Then that'll be the October being, right?
I would expect.
Okay. Is everyone clear on that, then?
Chairman?
Alan, please.
So technically, you have 60 days to adopt a scoping document from when it's submitted. So I advise that when it comes in in September, if it does, that even if it's not perfect, you can set the hearing date, we can comment, the public will have it to review and comment, the board can look at it and comment, and then at that scoping hearing, everyone can lay out their comments. And within that 60-day window, we should be able to get a final scope that's adopted.
So just, just to state this more explicitly, or maybe I'm repeating it, September, you'll, you'll submit it a couple, at the usual date, September, we'll discuss it as a board, we'll acknowledge receipt, we'll set the public hearing for the October meeting, folks will come in, they'll state, hey, we want more of this, or less of that, or wouldn't it be great if you looked at that? No comments about good or bad, got it, we'll, I'll be clear. And that will be a session to take input. Other, that's, and then November, I guess, we'll then.
Prove the scope.
Prove the scope. Okay, good. Everyone clear on that? Any questions on process? Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I, just for the clarity of people watching and people here, can Steve just give a, it's short, so we don't try to cut this out, the difference between scoping and a public hearing. Scoping dealing with a particular document, and the public hearing is opinion.
Let me approach it this way. Think of the scope as the table of contents of the draft environmental impact statement. The scope is going to lay out all the things that are going to be looked at. It's not going to say what's going to be said about them one way or the other, it's going to say, there's going to be a chapter on noise, there's going to be a chapter on lights, there's going to be a chapter on water quality, so forth. So when you hold your public hearing on the scope, you shouldn't have comments saying, I'm very concerned about the lighting, I'm very concerned about the traffic. If someone takes a look at the scope and, the draft scope, and they see there's already a section on traffic on there, look, if they want to come up and say, we think it's great, there's a section on traffic on there, that's fine, but it doesn't really add anything to the conversation. What you're looking for is people to say, I don't know, there are carner blue butterflies that I've observed on the property, and I think that if you're going to be looking at endangered species, there should be a subsection on carner blue butterflies, something like that.
What's been left out, in other words.
Yes, something that's been left out, or something that you may want to have looked at, or looked at specifically, that otherwise might not be looked at in the EIS.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add one more thing. The topics in the positive declaration, those headings, are what is going to be the subject matter of the DEIS, you've decided that already. So there's no historic resources chapter, because at the last meeting, you decided there wasn't any more comments on that. They have ship-o letters saying no impacts, so that issue is out of the DEIS. So it's really focusing on the POS deck reasons?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear.
And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but if you've already determined that there's no potential significant environmental impacts for an item, like historic matters or what have you, then you can't backdoor it into the EIS and say, well, gee, now we're going to add it into the scope, even though we've already found that there's no potential adverse significant impacts for that. So there are a few things that have gone by the wayside, but other than that, I mean, unless you've specifically made a finding on it already, everything is open.
Okay, thank you.
Good. All right, any other questions on process for September, October, related to Shakespeare? None? Okay, any new business? Motion to adjourn?
I might, I might.
Second? All right, thank you very much, have a good night, have a good summer, see you in September, and thank you all.